And welcome to the December 13th School Board Meeting. And I want to welcome all of the parents, especially our students tonight. This is a special evening that we all look forward to each year to have our students perform, and we look forward to that. At this time, I'd like for you to stand for a moment of silence, please. Amen. You may be seated. At this time, I'd like the superintendent to give the names of the students that will be giving the Pledge of Allegiance and also making the statements for this evening. Dr. Bracy.
Thank you Chairman Parent, and good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
And we're glad to have you with us on this December evening. And with us today, you see, we look out and the audience is filled, the room is filled, and I see smiles on faces, and a lot of students out there in the foyer ready to come in. And today with us, we have Churchland Preschool, and they will provide us with the Pledge of Allegiance as well as the school statement. But I'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and introduce the person that will be delivering the pledge, and that's Mr. Maddox Helms. Maddox will lead us this evening in the pledge. He's a member of the Churchland Soccer League, and in his spare time, he loves playing Legos. He hopes to become a Navy policeman. Maddox's parents are Mr. Matt Helms and Ms. Maggie Daly. And if they are here, please stand and be recognized. Providing us with the school statement, this evening, we have the pleasure of having from Churchland Preschool twins, Markeia and Makira Jenkins. Ms. Markeia participates in her community as a member of the Glam Doll Dance Group. She loves playing outside, eating chicken nuggets.
Good job. Love to.
So do I, yeah. Markeia plans to become a teacher and will hopefully lead a classroom here in Portsmouth Public Schools. And we're glad to hear that because we do have some teacher vacancies. Markeia, her sister, is also a member of the Glam Dolls Dance Group. She enjoys playing with her Barbie dolls and playing hide-and-seek. Her current goal is to become a mail carrier. Markeia and Makira's parents are Ms. Marina Hayes and Mr. DeMarco Jenkins. And if you all are here, will you please stand and be recognized? And also, I would like to recognize the principal of Churchland Preschool, Ms. Robin McIntyre. And if there are any other staff members from Churchland Preschool, will you please stand at this time? Yeah, I know where they are, yeah. They're where they're supposed to be with the students. Okay. Mr. Maddox?
My name Maddox Helms. I'm a pre-K student in Mr. Deloach and Ms. Hadikla at Churchland Preschool. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you.
Great job.
Mister Chairman, School Board Chairman, Mrs. Williams, Vice Chairwoman, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are the pandas. A day at Churchland Preschool. My name is Markeia Jenkins. I'm a pre-K student at Churchland Preschool Center in Ms. Little's and Ms. Holloman's class.
My name is Markeia Jenkins. I'm a pre-K student at Churchland Preschool in Ms. Hayes and Ms. Wise's class. We are the pandas. A day at Churchland Preschool. It's so exciting. Here's what we do, just so inviting. First we start with the yummy breakfast, just a name of few, cereal meal, always get so smooth. Announcement time is so divine. This is our place, line by line. I'm a Churchland Preschool panda, gentle and kind. I learn to care, share, and use my mind. I work hard every hour because I have panda power.
Oh, wow.
Learning time is so much fun, reading give mouth. We are not done, losing technology to learn our way to brighten our future for each day.
Our friendship to the pumpkin patch helps us go. And our friendship to the Nutcrackers really amaze us so. Community helpers and parents alike, all of our school, we're very light. The teachers and staff, they love us so. They guide our path and watch us. We are Churchland Preschool, your present, your future. Thank you.
Oh, wow. Yeah, we can stand up. Hold up, we've got something we'd like to give you. Good job.
Thank you all so much. You are absolutely fantastic. And I think we have some superstars right here.
Absolutely.
Don't you think so?
Absolutely.
So on behalf of the Portsmouth City School Board, we just want to present you a little token of appreciation. You all were just absolutely beautiful.
Yes.
I could take all of you home with me. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. At this time, we will have the musical selection by the Choral Students at Churchland Preschool Center. All right, wait a minute, just a minute. We don't want them leaving. Hold up just a minute. All right, let's go. Board members, let's go down and the gifts are... May I... May I have your attention, please? May I have your attention, please? I'm not going to get that. Hello. May I have your attention? May I have your attention, please? Just before the students and the parents leave, I just want to thank the... I know what, being a formal principal, I know what it takes to have parents to get their children to an event, and the teachers that help prepare the students this evening. We just want to thank the parents and the teachers and the students for coming tonight, and we really do appreciate this very much. Thank you. And then... Yes. May I have your attention, please? At this time, Mrs. Williams will give the mission statement. Mrs. Williams?
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I'd like to change the agenda this evening and move Agenda Item 12.3 to 3.5. Board members, do you have any objections to doing that?
No.
All right.
Move for approval with amendment.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, I'm not going to make you do your electronic vote. So at this time, I'd like to have Reverend Fleming and Dr. Whitaker, if you would come down to the floor again, please. And at this time, I'm going to ask all the board members to come with us. Maybe I need to stand up. Well, this is a sweet and sad story, but we have enjoyed both of you serving the School Board and giving your all to the city of Portsmouth and to the boys and girls, and standing up for the employees, and we really appreciate it. This board would like to present each one of you a plaque of recognition. It says, "Recognition of Service Presented to Dr. Ingrid P. Whitaker. In Special Recognition of Your Dedication to Portsmouth Public Schools as an Honorable Member of the School Board from January 1, 2015, to December 31, 2018. Your advocacy for Portsmouth's children is commendable, and we sincerely thank you for your service." And this is all listed, the Honorable Members of the Portsmouth School Board. Thank you very much for your dedication.
Thank you.
And to our Honorable Reverend Joseph A. Fleming, in special recognition of your dedication to the Portsmouth Public Schools as an Honorable Member of the School Board from July 24, 2012, to December 31, 2018, your advocacy for Portsmouth's children is commendable, and we sincerely thank you for your service. And this is all, what has all of the School Board members' names on the plaque, and we thank you very much, both of you. God bless you. Now, can we get a picture, another picture with your...
Okay. One, two, and three. Are we ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, board members, please make your, record your attendance by electronic vote, please. Madam Clerk?
All members are present.
Thank you very much. The next item is electronic vote, consideration of the agenda for December 13th. You have had an opportunity to review the agenda. What is the board's pleasure?
No for approval.
Motion's been made, and second, do we have any discussion as amended?
As amended, yes.
As amended, please. Board members, would you please make your voice by electronic vote? Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Now, the good part, good part, we're going to have our student representative report. And before you give your report, I want to thank you for the card, and thank you for... I can't wait to get into these.
You're welcome. Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, Dr. Bracy, members of the School Board. Some of the things that I've been up to since I last saw you guys, I have recorded three videos for Portsmouth Finest. One was regular where I just talked about what's been happening in the district, and then I did a holiday special where I talked about some of the things I've done as it pertains to the holidays. And then there's another video of me reading to children at Hodges Manor Elementary. So if you haven't already checked out my videos, I added the link on my Twitter page and there on the Portsmouth Public Schools Facebook page, so go watch those.
Okay.
Again, I read to two classes at Hodges Manor Elementary last week, I'm a second grade class and a kindergarten class. It was a lot of fun, and the kids were really nice. I enjoyed that a lot. I attended the Baker's Best Competition at Woodrow Wilson High School. I walked around, ate some food, got to see a lot of people, met some interesting people. That, again, was really fun. The Portsmouth Public Schools Foundation did a really good job with that, so hopefully they'll look into doing something like that in the spring. Also, on yesterday, I went to the PTS, PTA Holiday Social where I had the pleasure of judging the entries for the Reflections Competition. We have some really, really, really talented students in the district, so I'm excited to see the results of that. Onto suggestions and concerns. Students are tired of pizza and hamburgers. They're requesting spicy chicken sandwiches or the little spicy chicken... They're requesting spicy chicken sandwiches or the little spicy chicken balls. So, yeah, that's what they want for lunch now. Exam exemptions. When you're in 12th grade, if you have an A in a class and you have less than three absences, you are exempt from taking the final exam. I was wondering if we could look into making that apply for AP students. When you take an AP class, you have to worry about an SOL exams and your AP exam at the end of the year, so I was wondering if there was a way that we could just make it so if you're in an AP class, you don't have to worry about your final exam because around that time, you'll already be taking SOLs and your AP exam. So I feel that was something we could look into, that'd be really nice. The Here Comes My Bus app. So the Here Comes My Bus app, it's the app where it'll tell you when your bus is within a certain distance from your bus stop. So when it's cold, or even if parents just want to know where their kids are in the morning, that's really, really helpful. I had the opportunity, I guess, to pilot it, and it was really, really good. And a lot of students have been asking me about when it'll be available for them to use because I've been told that there's a route they have to take for that. So if I could get some more information on that, that would be really nice. Lastly, I would like to invite all of you, our new board members here especially, to come and be on Portsmouth Finest sometime next year. If you're ever free, I would love to have you. So, yeah, after this meeting, if you would like to come on and be interviewed, let me know. That's it. Thank you.
All right, hold up. Ms. Heinz? Ms. Heinz?
Yes, sir, thank you. Question about the exam exemption.
Yes.
When, what AP students are you speaking, are you talking midterm or your AP classes all year? Because I know we're on a four-by-four, so when we talk about exam exemptions, are we talking about midterm or are we talking about final?
Final, because final is around the same time you'd be taking your actual AP exam.
Right. I just want to make sure we're not talking about midterms.
It's not midterm, it'd be at the end of the year, like in June or May.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Saying no other comments. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, known as the CAFR Report. And Dr. Bracy, are you going to be introducing?
Yes, Chairman Parent. Yeah, at this time presenting the CAFR, we have Ms. Christina Adolf.
Krista Adolf.
Krista Adolf.
All right. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the school board.
Good evening.
And Dr. Bracy. I am pleased to be here tonight to present the results of the June 30, 2018 audited financial statement. I will try to make this as brief as I can. We were engaged to audit not only the financial statements, but in addition to auditing the financial statements, we do audit your compliance with certain laws and regulations put out by the Auditor of Public Accounts of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And in addition to that, we also audit your compliance with laws and regulations and grants in regards to your federal grants that you receive, also known as under the Uniform Grant Guidance or Single Audit. And so when we conduct our audit, our audit of the financial statements really encompasses testing the significant balances and transactions that you see built into those financial statements. In conducting our audit, we do gain an understanding of the internal control environment and the processes and procedures put in place over those financial transactions in order to really help us with the design of our audit. It's not to issue a separate opinion on internal controls. So if you're familiar with the private sector and the SOX 404 reporting, they do issue a report on the effectiveness of operating controls. We do not do that. However, if any matters were identified during the course of the audit where there were deficiencies in internal controls, we would be required to report those to you. Additionally, if there were matters of noncompliance in our testing of compliance, we would also be required to report those to you. Now, an audit is an exhaustive and a very long tedious process. We start the planning generally in the April timeframe, issue the financial statements in the late November, early December timeframe, and then ultimately wrap up with this presentation to you. So the finance staff, their time has been very helpful and we're very appreciative of them and the other departments that we work with to get this audit done over a relatively on-and-off eight-month period. So the results of our audit based in our testing was there's an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. And so that is a clean opinion that really is the best ultimate result you'd hope you'd want for your audit. Also, with regards to our reporting on compliance and internal controls over government auditing standards, we also have, again, an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. Additionally, we did not identify any matters of noncompliance or any material weaknesses in internal control with regards to that report. So it truly was a clean audit all around. Now, those are the two reports that are included in your financial statements. We also audit your compliance with federal grants. Your federal grant program is part of a larger program with the city of Portsmouth, and so that report will be included in the city of Portsmouth's financial statements. So again, we audited several programs related to Portsmouth schools. We did not identify any findings. We did not identify any matters of internal control, but again, that report will be in the city's financial statements, not in yours. One thing I do want to draw to your attention in the financial statements this year, you, as well as the school boards across the country, implemented a new accounting standard this year, and that was the accounting and financial reporting for other post-employment benefits. And this would be like your retirees' healthcare and then your participation with VRS. You offer services such as the health insurance credit that's through the VRS program as well as group life insurance. So there's a significant number of benefits offered to retirees. Well, the long-term liability that you'll ultimately pay to those retirees is now required to be projected back to current value and recorded on the face of your financial statements. Historically, a piece of that number has been included already in your footnotes. So if you looked at last year, you would see a small piece of the other post-employment benefits in your footnotes. However, none of the information for VRS and their related plans was available historically. So now all of that has come in. It's added a significant amount of effort and probably 20 pages of additional disclosures to your financial statements, as well as bringing that large liability on the face of your statements. So I tell you this to tell you that if you try to look at your financials this year and compare them to last year, they're not really going to be apples-to-apples because of this new standard. So a couple additional things I'm required to tell you as a result of the audit, there are a few estimates built into these financial statements, namely, the large ones would be your pension and your OPEB liabilities. Since they are actuarially computed, there's a significant number of assumptions and underlying estimation and process that goes into those. So any changes in those assumptions would ultimately change what that liability that's currently recorded on the face of your statements is. So we do bring that to your attention, that those numbers could change. So part of our audit to tell you, if there were any disagreements that we had with management or any difficulties in conducting the audit, we would be required to bring those to your attention. So I'm pleased to tell you we did not have any disagreements with management or any difficulties in conducting the audit. Additionally, we did not propose any significant audit adjustments throughout the course of the audit. So there was one minor matter that popped up at the very last minute we were notified of in the legal letter, and that required something that should have been accrued back to June 30. But because of the timing and the audit essentially being done, management chose not to make that entry at such a last minute. So we didn't believe it had any material impact on the financial statements themselves. At the end of the audit, we do rely on management throughout the course of the audit to provide us the information that we need, to provide us the support that we need to answer our questions truthfully about the audit. And so at the end of the audit, management does provide us a written representation that says that they did answer all of our questions truthfully, that they provided us the information that we asked for and the information that ultimately we needed to fully conduct this audit to make sure that those financial statements are correctly stated. Lastly, we are required to be independent with regards to the school board, and that's likened to the conflicts of interest requirement that you have. So we can't have any financial interests in the school board or any family relationships that ultimately would cause some sort of bias to give you an audit opinion that you ultimately didn't warrant. So we are independent with regards to the school board. That's really the wrapping up of my audit presentation. I would like to draw to your attention that there's no significant standards coming out in the next two years that will ultimately significantly impact your financial statements. But three years from now, there will be a new standard with regards to leases. If you're following what's happening in the private sector, it's happening there. It's also carrying over into the government sector, so that will be a significant change that you'll see three years from now with making all leases essentially be treated like a capital lease. So it will cause a grossing-up effect ultimately of your balance sheets, your statement of net positions. So with that, that's our conclusion. We, again, would love to thank management for all the time and effort they put into assisting us with providing supporting documentation, with answering our questions, with putting together the CAFR that you have presented in front of you, and I will gladly take any questions that you might have.
One question I have, and thank you for this report. And after you go through this, and you, and this is the first evening that we are live streaming this, so we have our citizens that, some of our citizens that are viewing this, and I want them to know that having a clean audit is the highest audit that you possibly could have. And on page 108 of your, of the CAFR report, and I'm not going to read Under Compliance and Other Matters, but I am going to read this because I want to read this for the public. "The results of our test disclosed no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards or the specifications of audits of counties, cities, and towns." And I think the public needs to know, and the members of our staff need to know, that we, having a clean audit is the highest audit you've got. So there's, there are no, a lot of times, some citizens may say, they like to bring back five or six years ago what transpired, but all that is in the past, and this board has made sure that we have a staff that's, that is up to par and we are meeting all the standards. So I applaud the audit, and I know that this is a great day for Portsmouth, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to applaud it. And I want to applaud the staff. Would the financial staff please stand up? Mr. Foster, I think you're here. Yep, yep.
Thank you all very much. I know that you, I know how much work, because I have to go through this in my employment, and it's a long process, so thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Monthly Curriculum and Instruction Report. Dr. Williams? This is a fun time, too.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. I'm always delighted to give you the Curriculum Instruction Report, and I will call your attention to the written report that's in board docs. But tonight, we have a very special treat due to Jason Argonauts and our experience with Jason Learning. Tonight, we have with us a student, Walker Duke, who is a sophomore at Churchland High School. And Walker is here tonight with his mother, Robin Holly Duke. Miss Duke, would you please stand? Thank you. And he is the son of Kenneth and Robin. Walker, you can come up, please. Inspired by his mother, an attorney, and his father, a retired military veteran, Walker feels an innate sense of responsibility to his community and his country, and he intends to better serve both by becoming an attorney. In pursuit of that goal, he is currently enrolled in a dual enrollment program with earning an associate degree from Tyewater Community College while graduating from high school. It is through family vacations across the United States and abroad that he developed a profound respect for the landscape and the environment of the world and a desire to ensure that it is protected and preserved. So when presented with the opportunity to assist in research through the Jason Learning Program, Walker was excited and anxious to participate. The Jason Experience has given him an entirely new perspective on science as it pertains to the environment. During Walker's experience, he gained a love for science and is now considering a career in environmental law, so he can combine his goal to be an attorney with his newfound interest in protecting the environment. Walker believes that the stricter regulations and adherence to environmental policies, we can effectively preserve our beautiful planet. As a member of the graduating class of 2021, he plans to pursue an undergraduate and a law degree from Stanford University. In addition to Walker, tonight, we have our teacher here, Ms. Kami Field. And Ms. Field is the Earth and AP Environmental Science Teacher at Churchland High School. This is her 18th year of teaching. She's a graduate of our very own Manor High School in Portsmouth, and she wanted to return to her roots in teaching this city, which she loves. She is passionate about science education for all students, and she enjoys bringing the world to her classroom through the many professional development experiences available to our Portsmouth teachers. She strives to inspire her students to love, discover, and protect the earth, and encourages each one to apply to the many camps, class trips, and other educational opportunities that we have to offer here. Are there any other members of the Churchland High School staff here tonight? So please stand. All right. Well, Walker, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, Chair Parent, Vice Chair Williams, Dr. Bracy, school board members, and all those assembled. I'm Walker Duke, and I'm a sophomore at Churchland High School, and I traveled to the Pyrenees with the Jason Organization in August of this past summer for a week of exploration and research. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Bracy and the city of Portsmouth for funding the trip. I'd also like to thank the Jason Organization for having me on such an amazing exploration. The environment is really important, and during my week in the Pyrenees, I learned how even the smallest of insects can affect an ecosystem. From the smallest bug to the tallest trees, we tracked many different species to see how they all influence each other in the world around them. Also during my excursion, I've made friends and made memories that I would cherish forever. I've swam in a lake at 8,000 feet above sea level. I've climbed up a mountain in a rainstorm. I've slept on a rock. I've caught bugs. I've measured trees, and I've drank water from a waterfall, and the list goes on and on. All of this is a part of the Jason Experience. These are all experiences that I will cherish forever, and I look forward to making new ones with the Jason Organization next summer. My excursion was a great learning experience for me and gave me a newfound appreciation for science and the environment. And with my newfound respect for science, I will look into all fields of science and curate as much knowledge as I can in each aspect. I would like to again thank Dr. Bracy and the city of Portsmouth for an amazing trip and wonderful experience. I look forward to applying again and going on another excursion with the Jason Organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's just a little slideshow of some of our adventures. So we had talks by the scientists. You saw them teaching us in the basement of the hotel. It was a nice little classroom. There's us.
Is that where you slept? That, no.
Actually, the hotel was pretty nice. Yeah, we had a chance to see a lot of different wildlife, like that cute little guy. There's the lake, and it was freezing. Those guys were crazy, but it was very fun. We did a lot of research. We measured tree diameter. We captured insects. There's our lady, Jude Kessel. She's in charge of the Jason Argonauts. Oh, there's our little tree measurer. We learned how to read all kinds of instruments, things that I haven't seen before. There's our classroom. Oh, we did a little book swap, so that was nice. The students each brought a book, and we traded them. Oh, there's one of our bug catchers right there. So we had to bring home the bug juice and then replenish the bug juice. That's what Walker's doing right there, refilling it with the delicious concoction of vinegar and wine. It was crazy. There he is.
Think bugs are high in protein, right?
Yeah. Oh, and we captured birds. Those are birds in those bags, and we measured the wings and how much fat was on them. There's our scientist. Well, not the little girl, but the other three. That's real valley. Isn't that beautiful?
It is beautiful.
GPS and... There, there's the rock. He was really asleep, too.
Oh, there you go. All right.
Oh, we found a little pool of tadpoles.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, there we go.
Very nice. Very good.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, school board members, Dr. Bracy, and all those assembled. Okay, I'm going to skip some stuff because you know who I am now. Oh, I love my job. I love my students. I'm very proud of teaching Portsmouth. Some other school systems think they're ahead of the curve, but we paved the curve.
There you go.
And we continue to pave a path to success for all of our students. I'm here tonight with Walker to thank you for your commitment to science education in Portsmouth Public Schools. You've made it possible for Walker and I to have an unforgettable experience in the Andor and Pyrenees Mountains this August. It was really amazing for me to really just geek out with scientists all day long, to learn about a new ecosystem, to ask them questions about designing experiments. Sometimes I talk about science to people, and they're just, their eyes glaze over. So, it was cool to just be with science for a week. It was awesome. It was breathtaking. You saw the pictures. From dawn to dusk, we were outside, and it was awesome to watch one of my favorite students discover the hard and satisfying work of real science. I enjoyed seeing Walker forge new friendships with his fellow Jason Argonauts and be the smartest student in the hotel basement classroom.
Oh.
He was. It was a joy watching him bound up and down mountains like a boy. Oh. Chucks me up, sorry. Eat lunch in a sunlit valley. You saw it. Jump in a freezing mountain lake. And tirelessly collect data, even though he was cold or hot, and wet, and tired, and probably thirsty. It is experiences like this that inspire students to become the future leaders in scientific research and work toward a more sustainable earth. So, thank you again so much for your generosity, your commitment to the children of Portsmouth, and for making science a priority in our schools.
Thank you very much. Thank you both of you. Ms. Hines, and then Dr. Bracy. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. Her tears, I felt them, they're real. But first, I want to say, Dr. Bracy, Dr. Winn, Ms. Nelson, thank you for bringing this program to Portsmouth. I remember it was about a year and a half ago when we first introduced this, and I was excited and wanted to be a part of your luggage, and so I'm wondering where my invitation was, you know? I mean, I, and...
Got lost in the mail.
I understand that happens. But Walker, I want to say, what you've done in that week are things that I'm jealous of. As, as a teacher that sits here, I spent two and a half weeks in South America doing what you did as an adult, and I wish I had the opportunity to do it when I was a teenager. And I wish I had the opportunity to open it up to more teenagers today, to make that learning relevant, to make it real, because even when I went at 30, I was like, oh, my God, this is what this means, and this is how this works, and this is what we can do with this. And it just makes your life richer to have these experiences. It makes your knowledge and your content richer for having these experiences. These are things that nobody will understand unless they've done something like it, and you are unique in the fact that you've done it and that you've been there, and it gives you so much credibility by having done these experiences. And I'm proud to sit here and say, we were a part of the journey to take you to that. So, there's a little bit of me in that Andean, you know, in that Andorin Lake. There's a little bit of me, you know, bug collecting because I did my fair share of eating ants in the rainforest. So, they are high in protein, just saying.
They are.
Ms. Field, is it Ms. Field? I want to say thank you for going. I want to say thank you for, for taking our kids there and having that love, and you as the adult in the room, bringing that back and making it come alive and making that learning more relevant. That is what we struggle with today, is having relevancy in our classrooms, and how does this fit? And you can take that, and you can bring that back, and with Walker, it just is wonderful. So, I just wanted to say, number one, I'm jealous. Number two, I'm proud. But number three, I can't wait to have more of you all go and experience this and bring those pieces of the world back to Portsmouth and to our students. So, for that, I just wanted to say thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Dr. Whitaker?
Congratulations to you, Walker, for the hard work that you've put in and the experience that you had, and also to Ms. Field for leading this excursion. And I couldn't let the moment go by without everyone knowing who Walker is. He is the grandson of our late, great mayor, Dr. Holly. And Dr. Holly was a trailblazer in our city, and I see the same trailblazing spirit in you. So, I want to thank you for your dedication, and you go all the way. Go get that law degree at Stanford, and I know that great things are in store for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
And of course, not only the great, late Mayor Holly, but also Walker's, is that his uncle Wyatt T. Walker, the great uncle, civil rights leader that's well-known throughout the country? And of course, we all know his mother, Robin Holly, who's worked in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office before, and now in private practice. So, you have some deep shoes to fill.
Yes, ma'am.
But it sounds like you're filling them well, Walker, because each time Dr. Winn does the presentation, each, each meeting, I am so impressed at what the, what the children in Portsmouth Public Schools are being exposed to and are doing. And we need to continue to tell the positive stories instead of the negatives. So, again, congratulations, Walker. I'm glad you had a good time. I saw you sleeping on the rocks.
Yes.
So, I know you're tough.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? So, enjoy Stanford or wherever you want to go. The sky's the limit for you.
Absolutely. Dr. Bracy?
Walker, congratulations on your trip. I know it was quite an experience for you, and I'm glad you had the opportunity to attend you and Ms. Field both. When we brought Jason Learning on, one of the things that sold us on it was the Argonaut experience that you would be able to see firsthand. And this is, I think, maybe our third year that we've been involved with it, and every time we come together and hear the stories, you know, they get more amazing each and every year. A couple of weeks or so ago, Reverend Patillo and I did a presentation to, at the Virginia School Board Association, and it was on Jason Learning, sharing the experiences to other superintendents and board members about what Jason does and the effect that it has on our students. And Reverend Patillo joined me in that presentation. Now, I have another one coming up in February in Los Angeles that I have to speak at a national audience of superintendents and administrators. So, I don't think Reverend Patillo would mind if I bump him and, and take you.
I appreciate it.
All right. All right, we'll, we'll talk about it. All right. We're good.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both of you. At this time, we'll have a presentation in recognition of Ms. Laurie Jensen, RN at Churchland Middle School. Dr. Bracy?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Dr. Mueller is going to come and make a special presentation. When we heard about this story, we knew it was one that, that needed recognition beyond just at the local level. We wanted to make sure that citywide, everyone knew what took place. So, Dr. Mueller, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you very much. I'd like Ms. Kimsey also, who is principal of Churchland Middle School, to come forward, please.
This is in recognition of Mrs. Laurie Jensen, who is one of our outstanding nurses for Portsmouth Public Schools. She's the nurse at Churchland Middle, and on December the 4th, they brought her, a young lady who was choking, and without hesitation, with her training and her cool head, she stepped forward, did the Heimlich maneuver, spit that right out, and saved that young lady's life, which we are all grateful, of course, and it's through her knowledge and caring that we would like to present her with a certificate and a wonderful clock that just says Laurie Jensen, RN, 12-4-2018, a moment in time. And that's exactly what she created, many more moments for that young lady. So, we'd like to thank her.
At, at this time, I would like the board members to go down, and I think that we need to all go down and, and shake this lady's hand, please. So, we just fall out that way?
Okay, this was for my student, and that's just all I do it for. But I really, really appreciate Ms. Kimsey and Mr. Garcia and Ms. Perry Campbell, who are here supporting me, and Dr. Mueller, and my fellow nurse, Jennifer. But the students are wonderful. I've only been doing this since February, and I, I love the students that we have. We've got, we've got good ones, so, thank you.
Ms. Jensen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
God bless you. All right, the next item on the agenda is electronic vote. It's a consideration of a resolution recognizing Virginia Principals Appreciation Week, January the 20th to the 26th, 2019. Dr. Bracy, I assume Mr. Ziegler's going to read that. Okay?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Williams, members of the board, Dr. Bracy. On behalf of school administration, I am honored to present this resolution for your consideration in honor of our fantastic cadre and team of administrators and principals across the schools of Portsmouth. Certificate of Recognition by the virtue of the authority vested in the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized 2019 Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week. Whereas school principals work cooperatively to direct, develop, and inspire all members of the school staff and student body, and to communicate effectively with parents to engage them in the learning process, and whereas principals serve as educational leaders responsible for managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment for all students in Virginia's public and private schools, and whereas principals and teachers are entrusted with the opportunity and the responsibility of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children while they are at school, and whereas principals must work collaboratively with teachers, staff, students, parents, and the community at large to proactively prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens, and whereas Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week is an opportunity to recognize the hard work of Virginia school principals and to recognize the importance of principals in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now, therefore, I, Ralph Northam, do hereby recognize January 20th through the 26th, 2019, as Virginia School Principals Appreciation Week in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Broke all vote, please. I mean, excuse me, electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. Do we have any principals here this evening? We had. We had some principals here, but...
They just left.
It's a tough job being a principal, and, and it, it is, and I applaud all of our principals in our school system because they do an outstanding job every day. The next item on the agenda is the, by electronic vote, is a consideration of the minutes of November the 8th. What is the board's pleasure?
Second.
Motion's made, and second, do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please, indicate your vote by electronic vote, please. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public comment. First is the public comment for non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir.
And would you please read the statement before the speakers come to the podium?
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk will call your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman. Mrs. Brenda Joseph?
And while, Ms. Joseph, while you're coming and to all the people that will be speaking this evening, if you are addressing specific personnel, this is not the time to do that. Any, if, any speakers who have any problems with any of our staff, that should be addressed with the superintendent. All these comments should be made in general and should not identify any personnel at all. Thank you. Ms. Joseph?
Well, I guess you knew what I was going to talk about then.
You're now ready to go.
Well, I will say one thing, and then I will call Dr. Bracy up. I'm requesting that the microwave in the room at Churchland High School be removed. That's a safety hazard if that microwave would catch on fire. That's 20 students that need to get out of that one door. And if she's got to have coffee, she needs to drink enough coffee before she goes to But I will be calling Dr. Bracy in the morning.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph.
Hello, and good evening, school board and members of the public. My name is Sergio Neal. And first of all, before I start, I would like to ask if it's okay with the board to recognize any members that are here from the Portsmouth Public Schools Special Education Department or the CIAT Committee. The open house that they put on a couple of weeks ago was excellent. The information that was given out was excellent. I was highly impressed by Dr. Bectall and her team of how they worked together with the members of the CIAT Committee to make that happen, and it was very informative and very, very outstanding, I mean, to say the least. So, I would like to thank all of them. The, the main reason why I'm here tonight is to address trauma-informed care in the school system, and I want to do that by sharing a story. The story takes place May 5th, 2005, and involves a student at Churchland High School. This student went to school one day, and, you know, told his family, you know, he'll see him later, had a lot of, you know, hugs and kisses or whatever the case might be, you know, gets to school, starts off the day great, you know? And the day goes on, he's happy, security isn't coming looking for him for a change because some girl he kissed in the hallway... saw him with another girl and all that good stuff. But anyway, you know, the student was just having a great day. Loved to be at Churchland High School. And by the way, Dr. Bectall was the principal at that time, so that made it even better, you know. So, lunchtime comes, and the student is hungry and ready to go to lunch, and it's third lunch, and there's, you know, no food, you know, how that goes, but, you know, there was something there. And while the student is sitting there, finally, security comes. And he's thinking, oh, my God, what did I do now? And the student, the security says, "Come with me to the office." Student is kind of hesitant, but he goes anyway. So, the student gets to the office, and, you know, to the surprise, he wasn't really in trouble. There was a call to the school that his mom was in the hospital, but his mom was pregnant. So, he was like, oh, great, little sister is coming. You know, let's get ready. So, the coach, PE teacher, took the child to the hospital. No problem at all because Dr. Bectall is that great and her staff was that great, and they made it happen for their student. Student gets to the hospital, you know, not knowing what's going on, thinking, you know, okay, you know, it's pregnancy. This is what happens, you know, baby's coming into the world. Quite natural circumstance. When the student, you know, is checking out, you know, things, all the family members are there. He's like, okay, you know, this is normal deal. Student gets on the phone because the student is working at the time. The student says, oh, let me call my job. Let them know I'm not coming to work. You know, my little sister is born, whatever the case might be. In that process, he hears his sister scream. And he's like, okay, why is she screaming? Not like a scream of joy, but a scream of terror. Gets off the phone, runs to the back, finds out that his mother dies while he's on the phone. Mother dies while he's on the phone. Then, in the conversation, finds out that his unborn sister died as well. Student still has to go to... But in the process, the student is trying to picture how he's going to deal with this, what's going to happen. Well, guess what? Student goes to school the next day. Now, the staff that had the training, that had an instinct of what needed to take place, like Dr. Bectall, and at the time Detective Salsa, who was the SRO, stepped in and immediately, you know, checked on this student, made sure the resources was there to get him through the day. Now, some of you may ask who this student was and how do I know? How well do I know this student? Well, quite naturally, I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, this student was me. I was the one who needed that trauma-informed care. Because I can guarantee you, had I would have not went to school the next day after my mother and my little sister died, I probably wouldn't have made it to be 31 years old and standing here right now. It is that serious when we have students who deal with trauma on a daily basis, who need that person, that group of people, to be there for them, to stand with them, to listen to them, to nurture them, to show compassion to them. Because we don't know that in that instant, whether that person is making a decision to continue with their life or to end their life. And it's that important with the resources that we have coming forward, that we use them to the best of our ability to find out what is in place already for our students and what more we can do. We are all quite aware of the trauma that takes place on a daily basis in this city involving our youth. But some of them, before they even make it out the front door, it's like a military war zone in their households. Then they get to the bus stop, and there's some other stuff going on. By the time they get on the bus, they already two-thirds of the way done for the day because it's not that much more they can take. You know, then while there's something being said and they just go off, somebody might be thinking they're just having a bad behavior day, but not realize the amount of stuff that they've gone through before they hit school on the front door. And it's important that we realize this and start taking a serious look at trauma-informed care and adverse childhood experiences. Because I can tell you right now, if it wasn't for Dr. Bectall, if it wasn't for now-retired Captain Salsa, I can almost guarantee you my situation would have went completely different. So, when I stand here before you and say that this is something that we, that you all as a school board definitely need to look into, this is what it is. So, hopefully, in the next budget, this is a priority. We make this happen. Thanks for Governor, Governor Northam for his proposal. And hopefully, you all will take some of that money and make it work for the best interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Neal.
Mr. Frank Cable, Cabell, I'm sorry. Cabell.
Hello, I hope you can hear me. My name is Frank Cabell. I'm a local resident, as is my wife, Ann, of Portsmouth. Unfortunately, I don't have a lot of nice pictures to paint for Portsmouth City School today. Unfortunately, for the last two and a half years, we've had issues with the school, I'm not going to name the school or people, that our grandson has been attending. Anything that ranges from five teachers by the time March got around to more serious problems this year than involves, among other things, one of the personnel, a paid employee, that was physically abusing our child. I understand from your comments specifically that you're trying to say that this is not the form to address this issue. We have gone through numerous people, paid employees, to address this issue, and it constantly fell through the cracks. So, that being the case, I'm asking you today, who do I talk to? I'd like to think that there's at least one or two up here on your board that could afford me some time to speak with you. And my wife, Ann, is in the audience today. So, if I could leave my number and address, I'd be glad to do that at a later date if that's taken to be more appropriate. But like I say, it's not a pretty picture. And I feel like it needs to be addressed, and it's been going on for over two months now to no avail as we try to go through the channels. So, with that being said, could you forward me to somebody along those lines?
Give your telephone number to Dr. Winn and...
I've been through Dr. Winn.
All right, well, then, Dr. Bracy will...
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take care of it.
I'll plan on doing that then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just leave your, if you'll leave your number with her, then she will get, you have it? Then, Dr. Bracy will take care of it.
If she could forward it to Dr. Bracy, I'd appreciate it.
That's correct.
That's the way to go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
Ms. Ann Cable, but I'm not sure if she wants to speak or not. Cabell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm just going to say it in generality. Even though we tried peacefully, respectfully, to go through the proper protocol, talking to the right people, I just felt we were pacified in trying to solve something that occurred over two months. And we get answers that are not coherent at all to us. And I feel that my grandson that attends this elementary school in Portsmouth, I don't feel he is safe there because of what had happened. We have had already issues in the last two and a half years, you know, when he was going there. I'd like to think that educators, administrators, your main goal is to... Our children's growth integral part of learning would should be a priority. Safety, number one. And I do not feel that way. I have not felt this way for over two and a half years because of constant things that had occurred that I was not given a proper answers. It's so incoherent. It's ridiculous to me. And every time I bring this up, I feel like I'm a nuisance. And it's not. I'm just being proactive regarding my grandson's education and safety. Today, I was asked, tonight, what are you doing here? This is a personal issue, and it's not. I wouldn't have been here if you would have been answered or taken care of in the first place. Something, some kind of resolution. Dr. Bracy, I emailed you a while back. I didn't email you again today prior to coming here because you have not answered my email, my concern. And I just want to say, I will tell any parent attending any public school to be more diligent in pressing for answers, you know, because it's easy to say, oh, we're doing everything we can. No, you're not doing everything you can when I have not heard anything, any coherent, clear answer. Okay, this is what was done. Then I'll be happy with that. But when I'm always in the cloud, I'm like, what is, what is going on? Then, I'm not getting a clear answer. I am, from my end, I am trying my best to work with the school, with the teachers. But it takes two to communicate, and it's like talking to a wall when I'm not getting any kind of explanation. You know, am I just being amused? Am I just being pacified? That's how I feel. It's so insulting, you know, because, you know, if every parent would participate in their children's, more diligent about what's going on with their school, then maybe the children will be, will do well, better in school, you know, in their general academics, in their, their... Which I'm trying to, I'm just so upset right now. I cannot think clearly. Their self-esteem, you know? Going to school, coming home. My grandson telling me he wants to hurt himself because he doesn't feel, he feels threatened? No, that's not acceptable to me. So, you, as educators, administrators, you have to do something about it. And that's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to let you know that Dr. Bracy has checked his emails, and he did not receive it. But he will take, he will take care of it. And thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Atkinson, yes.
I just wanted to be clear on what the allegation was because it seems like that they're saying that it's an allegation of abuse. Or I'm just unclear of what the allegation is. But is there a way you can clarify to me what the allegation is? Is it, are you saying abuse by a teacher? Without saying the name. I'm just trying to get clarity on the story.
I think it's an administration. They know about it, and they're dealing with it. That's all I can say.
Okay.
Okay? Ms. Williams.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Parent. I know you're saying it's the administration, and they're dealing with it. But this has been going on for some time, according to the parent. And I feel that all a person has is their feelings.
Right.
So, maybe the communication is not going whichever way. Sometimes people don't, when you don't hear what you want to hear, you do say, you know, you didn't get the right answer. But I do believe that the administration, Dr. Bracy, if he would contact, contact them, and even if, you know, Mr. Parent, the chair, would sit in on the meeting.
I could do that.
So that we can have a clear understanding of exactly what is going on.
Correct.
Because I do believe that sometimes we do become desensitized because we hear so many of the same types of issues. Because we haven't, we haven't heard this issue before. I mean, I haven't gotten anything on it. And she says it's been going on for a couple of months. She said a couple of years.
Two years.
But, but at any rate, I think, please, if it's the pleasure of the board, if Dr. Bracy could call her tomorrow or at the earliest, when the chairman could be there so we can get a clear understanding.
Okay.
Because I really don't like that going out about our school system and their feeling that. I mean, because that was put out there as the system being non-responsive.
Right.
And we haven't heard anything to clarify that.
Exactly.
So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering if we could get a follow-up discussion on our next agenda, on our next meeting about this, to get a full account so that we can follow through the process and make sure.
Will do.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any more speakers?
No, sir.
All right. Do we have any speakers concerning the board agenda items?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the monthly report, the Human Resources, Mr. Ziegler.
Good evening again, board members. You have before you my written report. I would just like to point out a couple of highlights. One is a new partnership that we're very proud of. Up until now, the housing partnerships that you've heard about have offered rent discounts. We now have a partner who is willing to offer a 3% purchase discount on townhomes. Unfortunately, they're in Norfolk, but 3% on a townhome is 3% on a townhome. And they're willing to extend that discount on purchase to all of our employees. We also have one pre-K teacher who we're very proud of. She qualified for a Commonwealth of Virginia grant for up to $6,380 to pursue her full license in pre-K education. She's currently teaching at one of our pre-K centers at Mount Hermon under a provisional license, and the state and the Department of Human Resources is willing to help her pursue her full license. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have. If there are no questions, I ask that the board please consider the transaction report for December as presented in my written comments.
Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Board members, please vote electronically. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ziegler. The next item on the agenda is under Budget and Planning. Mr. Falk.
Good evening, Chairman Parent.
Good evening.
Vice Chair Williams, Dr. Bracy, and school board members. I present the items under Budget and Planning this evening for your approval.
Okay. And this is a board, this is consideration of contract number ITV 947B 1819 for food service equipment. Motion's been made. And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. This is electronic vote. Please make your vote electronically. Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. The next item is your, the consideration of the financial report. You have, for October, you have received that. Do we have any questions? Motion's been made. And second, do we approve the October financial report? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please vote electronically. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
It's unanimous.
Except, I think Ms. Hines had to leave. The consideration of financial budget report for November 2018, you've received a copy. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made. And second, do we have any discussion? I did have a discussion about the November report, but Dr. Bracy cleared it up, and it had to do with the risk management, the 5.1, and I'm glad that, board members, if you've read that report, you clarified at the very end of that, that the money that was transferred from the school board to the city council, that 5.1, $8 million. So I understand it now. Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other discussion? Hearing no more discussion. Board members, please vote electronically. Madam Clerk.
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Moving right along, Superintendent.
Good evening. Your time. Thank you, sir. And I wanted to continue with a financial matter from Mr. Falk with the risk management, and just to share with everyone that I and Mr. Falk, we have been working with the city manager and her team to work on the agreement with the risk management and how we will assess the money that they took away that's in our reserve. So we're still working through the language so that at the end of the year, we'll know how the process will work. Mr. Meekins has been working with us on that as well, reviewing all the language since the city attorney and the city manager working with it. We felt that we needed to make sure that Mr. Meekins was involved in the process as well. So hopefully by next meeting, we should have an update for you as far as where things stand with the agreement. And that was really the only piece of business that I wanted to share, other than I wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays, enjoy your time off. I think is, I think we all need a, some separation, sort of rest and relaxation with our family and friends, and we'll come back in 2019 rejuvenated and ready to go and finish out the year strong. And with that, I'd like to say thank you.
Reverend Fleming.
Remarks.
These are my last remarks.
Say what?
These are my last remarks. I am appreciative for being recognized on today, and I have been honored to serve since 2012. I am excited to know the direction in which Portsmouth Public Schools continues to grow and go. I have been a part of Portsmouth Public Schools since my family moved to this area in 1981. I was in fifth grade at Olive Branch Elementary School, Ms. Lily Moseau. I do not remember the principal because I was a star student. Do not ask anybody if that's true, but I am just appreciative of all of my colleagues who have served well, and even the new school board members who are coming aboard. I have learned so much, and I have been blessed by just serving with and for Portsmouth Public Schools. So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for being my colleagues. And of course, I am also celebrating Dr. Whitaker. The Whitaker family means a lot to me. I have known them forever, ever and a day, and I have always been blessed, as well as impressed, by Dr. Ingrid Whitaker. And every time she speaks, I feel like I have a free seat at ODU. And she is that impactful. So I just want to say thank you to all of you, and I wish you a happy holiday, and I look forward to watching your meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker.
Good evening again. It's been a privilege to serve, and I've always tried to do what was just, what was right for our students, our staff, and it really has been a learning experience. I can truly say that. I've learned a great deal. This board has worked well together, and everyone who's been a part of this board has really tried to do what's right for the city of Portsmouth and the public school system. I'm going to miss being here, but I'm not going, I plan on not being gone long.
Very good.
So 2020, I'm going to try and come back in 2020. But it really has been a privilege, and I just want to say thank you to all of those who allowed me to serve. Thank you.
And we want to, the board wants to thank Dr. Bracy because you've got some peanuts, and also from Mr. Meekins, we've got some chocolate-covered peanuts, and from the Church and Pre-School Center, we've got these beautiful paintings. So, all right. Ms. Atkinson.
I was going to say thank you for the peanuts as well, Dr. Bracy and Attorney Meekins, but I also want to give a kudos to the Office of Reading and English Department and Dr. Jacqueline Walker for the book drive. She actually decided to collect books for children so they would have some books to read over the holiday season. We all know An Idol Mine is the devil's workshop, so that's going to keep them busy over the summer. I also want to give a kudos to Lieutenant B. Hall. He brought the Teens in Traffic Stops program to Churchland, and I think that program should remain in the high schools. It basically teaches our children about rights and knowing their rights in the event of a traffic stop. They were able to play the roles of the police officer, the passenger, and the driver. So with the demographics of our school system, I think it's important that we keep this program, like I said, in our high school, and the children are engaged. That way we can continue to build a better relationship between a police officer and a teenager. And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Mr. Lamb.
Thank you Chairman Parent.
You got it.
You could tell, I know. Just a couple of things. I know that we've all been very busy. I mean, it seems as though we've all been going to, running here or there, going to this event and everything in between. And same with myself, getting off school, it seems as though I leave school and I'm heading to this, heading to that. A couple of small things that I just want to say thank you to, the Boy Scout troop, number 210. I got a call saying, you know, they need to earn a badge, and it was a, I believe it was more of a community civic badge, and I do not think I've been asked more difficult questions from young, young students about what I do on the school board. So it was, it was very, it was very good. Also too, Ms. Atkinson and myself, we had attended the Paradise Creek Nature Park. They had a meeting over youth resilience and also solar power presentation, and it was very insightful. It talked a lot about energy in the future and what solar can and can't do, and hopefully this is something that we can bring to the chair about possible, looking at having a discussion with that. The last thing I wanted to bring up was the fact that, we all know that the governor's office has released a proposed budget for this next school year. I've got this today, reading material, and I'd like to just read a couple of things here. Besides the 5% pay raise that everyone is talking about, one thing that's caught my mind is the proposal by Governor Northam to allocate $36 million to fund additional school counselors for school divisions, and a quote that he is, that he has said, "Virginia is a nationally recognized leader on school safety, but creating a safe learning environment means ensuring all of our students receive proper supports, including access to mental health professionals. Virginia's school counselors play a critical role in creating positive school climate and engaging with our students. They are an important source of support in the education system, and we need more of them. We can create safer learning environments in Virginia's students by taking a more holistic approach, and adding school counselors is integral to our success." And I can say that in relation to mental health and with what I see each and every day in my own classroom, I cannot agree more with this statement. So for me, it's going to be interesting. I know that this is the very beginning of the whole budget season, but it's going to be interesting to see where this goes. And so, and as I had said at the last meeting, I hope that sometime after the first of the year, Chairman Parent, we can again look at having someone come in for a presentation to show us what this is, especially if the governor's office is proposing additional funding, and we know that there's grants out there. I just think it's something we need to look at and not get behind the eight ball. Thank you.
Reverend Patillo.
I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and to be safe during this holiday season. And also, as Mr. Lamb mentioned about the governor's proposed budget, I'm here to inform that the finance team, they're already on it, and they're ahead of the game because our main goal is to make sure that our teachers and employees are fairly paid. But within the governor's budget, it is only funded SOQ positions, so we're working hard to try to find money within our budget to match what they actually will be giving us. So the budget is presented, but it's not a done deal, and there's still a heavy requirement on the part of the school division to make that happen. But I'm happy to say that I've talked with Dr. Bracy, and he's already working with Mr. Falk, and they're already ahead of the game on making sure we try to make that happen. So continue to lobby your council for funds, and also continue to keep us in your thoughts as we try to put this thing together. Thank you.
I wanted to thank Gwen Davis for the meet and greet reception last night to inform our women's small businesses of Portsmouth, because, you know, a lot of, a lot of our, a lot of the money, we spend millions of dollars, and some of that is not spent in Portsmouth, and we, she organized a meet and greet, and also that we took the time last night to, we had some dignitaries, and we honored Dr. Whitaker for her efforts as the chairman of the MWBE Committee, and we thank you very much. And yes, I just echo Reverend Patillo, the finance team met on Tuesday, and we are, we're off and running. It's going to be an interesting time because you're going to get a lot of numbers going back and forth, that's what the state's going to provide, and of course, that's been brought out. The SOQ only funds those teaching positions. And any non-teaching positions, we're going to have to make up, and that means we're going to have to look at the local share, providing that, those additional funds. So Mr. Falk and his staff, they're on it, and it's going to be another, another year as we go down this, trying to find revenue so that we can continue to provide quality services and to continue to retain and attract our teachers, teachers that we've heard tonight. So the next item on the agenda, there are no other speakers, is that a motion to adjourn. Motion for approval. Motion's been made. And second, I wish all of you a happy holiday and good evening. As I say, happy holiday to all and to all a good night.